And Matt Stone, technology extraordinary. If we could please stand for the pledge of allegiance, that'd be great.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have two sets of minutes to approve. One for the regular meeting on April 15th and one for the public hearing on the 15th. Do I have a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Great, okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Terrific. Welcome to the first public comment portion of the evening. If you'd like to come up and have a public comment, please state your name and address. And I ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Great, awesome. Student reps, where are we at today?
Where are we at?
Okay, well, it was the first day back from break yesterday. So we're just getting back into during school, which is fun.
But this is a huge week, right? We got, we have prom, which is awesome. We're very excited for that. There's a lot of AP exams this week.
Oh, wow.
And next week, which, you know, could be good, could be bad.
They're doing them at the school because they used to do them at the region, but then they moved there.
Oh, interesting, okay. And this is one of the first, are they on, in a computer?
They're all digital.
Yeah.
Almost.
Well, which ones aren't?
Like physics.
Okay, physics, I guess it's not.
Yeah, it's basically, they're all about stuff.
The baseball team's going to Cooperstown this weekend.
Wow, that's a great field trip.
Which will be a fun trip. Anything else? I think it's pretty, pretty quiet.
Do we have the new reps yet? Is that election over?
We're talking to people, it's pretty, it's pretty late.
What does that mean?
Like, it's a late in the air. It's like the last week of May.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we're late, I place a plate.
Okay, so we'll know for our June meeting.
Yep.
Great.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Thanks, guys. That's what I was gonna say. I have a new idea.
Oh, okay.
Awesome. All right, any questions for us, you reps, everybody?
No.
Okay, wonderful, thanks, guys.
Is the prom at the bowl now?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Looks like it's gonna rain, so who knows where we're gonna do pictures, but we'll figure it out. They have a roof, it's okay. Well, I'm at Echo Hotel, but yeah, we'll make it work.
Yeah, figure it out. Okay, cool. Um, any comments from, thank you, guys. Any comments from the board? Rob, nothing? Yeah, no, maybe, okay, right, you know, slate. All right, we are joined this evening by our scholar athletes. Mr. Reserve, do you want to come on up?
Sure. I know I'm one of them.
No.
Sure, so thank you for having me. We have seventeen of our seniors this year who recognize the criteria for this. They have to have a B-plus or better overall GPA. They have to play at least two sports of senior year. They have not had a major violation of the athletic agreement over their four years. They all participate in community service. It's a cheer group, seventeen students who accompanied me up to the ceremony in concrete. They helped to watch out for us and we ended up creating a wonderful day. And they're just a great group of kids. I'm sorry, I didn't get them here before. There's one time it just kind of fell through the cracks. And then on this one, we ended up with a rain day and all of our teams were inside and messed things up. We do have four of them here. So they get the three of them and Noah coming on.
I was like, who's it for?
Yes, you can tell how hard it's raining because they all have a cobbler's.
Sure, yeah, right.
But these are the four who can make it tonight and we're proud of them. And actually, all seventeen of them, obviously.
Oh.
Those are our scholar athletes.
Okay.
You guys want to say anything? It's your chance.
All right, I'll say my voice. All right, so I'm Noah. If you guys didn't know. But the Hawkinson, like honestly, the Hawkinson Athletic Program is, it's so awesome. It starts super young with HISA and it really keeps improving as you go up. I mean, HISA's phenomenal, but the bonds you build with your teammates and you play with them for, I guess I've been playing with these kids for twelve, thirteen years at this point. I've grown super close with all these kids and then seeing especially the scholar athletes succeed on and off the field or court or whatever you want, whatever they, their respective sports are. It's, or the, the trail.
You're very good.
The trails, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's, it's, it's awesome to see and it's, the ceremony was, was super gratifying to everyone. So, yeah, no, it's, it was awesome. I don't know if you guys have anything else, but the, the Hawkinson Program, thank you, Mr. Reserve, is quite, it's quite awesome and special.
Amazing.
Not to, not to get cheesy, but there was someone, my dad, when I was younger, said, "You're a student athlete," right? You're never called an athlete student, ever. If you're, if you're ever, if you're ever good enough to go and play collegiately or even further, the only time you really are never a student athlete is when you're getting paid, which we can talk about in our stuff now. But it's, it's, it's pretty impressive, though, when you can balance academics and athletics. I see the challenge with my daughter now as a freshman and to do it for multiple years, all the way through, it's pretty commendable, so great job on the hard work. It's pretty cool that, because you picked up baseball again for fun, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Wow, oh, okay.
Well, I have practice right now, but we only have some of the school board meetings left, so I was like, I gotta come.
That's right, that's true, that's true.
But, you know, just, it's pretty cool, so nice work.
And was it kids from, like, students from around the state who came to the ceremony? Or just like, just a region?
There are four different ceremonies, one for expedition, so it was all for, we had two hundred. It was a duty, it was a support. But it was out there, twenty-fiveish schools.
Wow.
They're actually, they're also scholarships too.
Wow, wow.
Oh, that's excellent.
Can you be a scholar athlete? I'm sorry, I just interrupted you.
Your turn.
Can you be a scholar athlete even if you're doing a non-school-affiliated sport? No, so it's just if it's part? Okay, cool, great.
Do they still do the Fisher Cat game?
That was for champions.
Champions, sorry.
Jeez, any other questions?
Everybody a three-season athlete? Oh, one step back. Favorite, favorite season, what is it?
Oh, how could I not say the undefeated soccer championship? There was, I mean, obviously, we ended in a championship, but our people were so close, it was so fun. We were super close, but it was just, it was a phenomenal season.
What about you guys?
There you go.
Amazing.
I will say soccer.
Papa.
Amazing, well done.
You ready to go to lunch, Mr. Reserve?
We went to Cheers.
Hi.
Yep, done it for several years, it's, it's a crowd pleaser.
Step up from some of your historical choices.
That's true.
Amazing. Any other questions? Great, congratulations, you guys, this is a big accomplishment. Wait, can we get a photo? Jody, can you take a photo of us? Welcome.
Be on the gaga, be on the gaga. Don't think you're stronger than one on.
Three, two, one. Hold on. Just take the couple. Okay.
We don't drive at the start of the road, right?
No, no, no. Can I look at you guys? Then you can drive.
Hello, Ms. Jody. How you doing?
All right. Thank you, guys. Okay, let's get squared away here.
Were you at, um, J's?
All right. Sorry, guys, all right. So, uh, we, yep, are going to talk through our board end-of-year goal reviews. There's a couple of things to this. We did this, we set our goals, so I want to frame the conversation and sort of what this is about in terms of this year and then also teeing up the conversation for next year. So every, um, every year for the past three years?
Four.
Four, the board, this Hopkins School Board has set annual goals. We try to tie these to our strategic plan, which is a five-year plan. And depending on sort of like, I think, you know, the, the feedback from the board, what we hear over the course of the year, then we think about what to prioritize from this strategic plan in terms of what we actually want our goals to be. It is worth noting that for many of these things, there is some work that the board does. There's also stuff that is implemented by the district, right? And we'll sort of talk through what some of those distinctions are. The, uh, we do a mid-year review in January and we took some notes on that. And then we're talking about it now. We have six weeks left in the school year, which is kind of wild. And so if there's anything that we want to just try to get in the last-minute push-around, it's really just thinking through that. If there's anything that we've missed that we really didn't think through or work on. And last but not least, we have our, we set our board retreat date for June 27th. It's a Friday. And we'll be talking, one of the agenda items of that, we'll be talking through our, um, our board goals for the 25, 26 school year. And so I think as we're thinking through this, I'd love for everyone to think about what of this do we want to carry through next year? Is there something that we retire because it becomes a standard operating procedure? Is there something that we tweak? Is there something new, right? We don't have to talk about that now, but I just want people to sort of be percolating ahead of June.
And it's okay to carry goals from one year to the next?
Hundred percent, like some of these are multiple-year pieces of things. I think the last thing I'd say about the process is that we try to set our board goals in June because then Mike traditionally, as a superintendent, has worked to set his, his goals and have the administrators set their goals, have the buildings set their goals, and then make sure that they're all tied together. And we try to do that over the course of the summer and the first part of the fall. So it's a lot of, a lot of wheels on the, and hubs on the spokes, but I think it's a, it's a really worthwhile process for us to think through. Okay, any questions about that? Good, great, all right. There is a doc in the Drive folder, hopefully everyone saw it. I'm gonna take notes in here and then we'll publish this after the fact. So I'm just gonna read through all of these. We can talk through, we'll have updates from the board. And then there are some things that Mike will also add context or information around. Okay, so the, under the first one, Curriculum and Assessment, the school board, working through the superintendent, will define our district's guiding principles. The way that we thought about this in January and over the course of this year, I think, is really through Portrait of a Learner, which was, has been a two-year-long process? A year and a half. Year and a half long. Uh, program, program at this point. We defined and articulated it, we reviewed it at CNA, I think, in December. And so one of the things that I was thinking about that I wanted to touch base on, Mike, was Jake, who is our outgoing assistant principal at the middle high school, like what is gonna happen now that he's transitioning?
So the transition's kind of already begun. Patrice, Ms. Brown has picked up a lot of that work. She really kind of partnered with him, even though Jake was leading it, she was a, a real support in the process. We are in one of the transitional pieces of which you'll be seeing more, I'm gonna say things, but letterhead, stickers, shirts, starting to work towards that. The committees, which has been one of our best committees, they're so great. Wanted to ensure that, that the work continued even though Jake's leaving, so Amy's already been brought on board, the new superintendent. Jake and Patrice met today. Amy is gonna be meeting with them soon in regards to those transitional pieces. So that work is going to continue. Committee reiterated how important it has been and now really getting down into the buildings and starting that, so.
Okay. Great, any questions on that?
Mike, I actually did have a question. How, so we're, you're in the beginning stages of kind of having it kind of rolled out into the schools or embedded into the culture of the schools?
Embedded is the right way to say, yeah.
Like the curriculum, the language?
Yeah, you know, this started probably this time last year. Jake came and presented and then the committees began their work and, you know, all the early stuff. But I'd say the embedded is the right word of really starting to get it into the culture.
Like living it, yeah. Okay, yeah, I'm interested in that process and, and hearing more as it goes on.
It feels good, yeah.
Okay.
Nice.
Okay, any other questions on district's guiding principles? Great, all right. The school board, working through the superintendent, will develop a review cycle for evaluating curriculum across the district, including English Language Arts, Math, Report Card, Science, Tech Books, Services, et cetera, to be presented to the board by the end of the 24, 25 school year. And it's worth noting, it lays out what it ties to in the strategic plan. Thank you, Andrea. So you have an update on this?
Yeah, so by the end of the Curriculum and Assessment Committee meetings this year, the committee has put together a review cycle that they are comfortable with. We did pause for their work on that, just knowing that there's gonna be a transition, both with no longer having a Curriculum and Assessment Director in the district and with having the new superintendent coming on board. So similarly, that work is, has been shared preliminarily with Amy Doyle. And will be continued next year in the committee.
Great. Great, any questions on that? Great, thanks, sorry, I'm sort of a trailing.
No, you're fine.
All right, under Finance, the school board, working through the superintendent, will develop an analysis of increasing special education costs with a report to the board by January 15th, 2024. Five.
Five.
Five, yeah. Rob, how do you feel like we did there?
I think if we gave the world any more information on special education, its costs, it's, I mean, I don't know what else you could do. You know? If you don't know at this point, you just haven't looked or read. So I, you know, kudos to everybody who put all of those primers together. I think that coupled with the glossaries that we have, there's, there's plenty of good information out there. I don't spend a lot of time on the website, so in terms of how accessible and where it is, that would be my only question, but that's just a question.
It's all under the budget.
Yeah, that's a good note, that we can put it under key supporting documents.
As we transition, yeah.
Yeah, totally, okay. Can I add one more thing in there? Is that I felt like the, and I will describe this after I talk, but the, I think one of the other things is I think we created a lot of materials, which was great. I think one of the other things I think we talked pretty robustly about as a board was the rise of special education needs at Harold Martin and through the district and trying to think about what is actually the best way to mitigate what's happening and provide intervention that will, A, hopefully help children and B, potentially mitigate costs long-term that are affiliated with special ed. Does that feel reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Anything else on that? Okay. The school board, working through the Finance Committee, will create a three-to-five-year financial analysis by end of year 2025.
Not gonna happen.
Okay.
Continuation.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is the same problem. And I actually have some new thoughts on this because the presentation that I will do for Budget Committee in June on different budgeting styles and formats, the more I read that the eight different types essentially, it's like we do a little bit of probably three or four of them. Some of them are really easy to dial into. These, these are our projected costs, salaries, that kind of thing. So could we do some forecasting? Probably. I really need to sit down with Mike and Laura about how much I'm intuiting into these different styles. Assuming there are things that we are doing. For instance, you know, some of it is, for a second, if you'll give me a moment. You know, program and planning or performance-based, outcome-focused, a lot of education use here that, but like Amplify, if Amplify is working, are we gonna continue to reinvest? You know, that kind of thing in terms of how you're looking at your budgeting process. But there's, you know, there's stuff in here that's just cuckoo-based as well, so.
Okay, that's interesting.
Kind of hoping that maybe through that, we could say that eighty percent of our budget is something that we can project with some certainty, but the other twenty percent, probably not.
Yeah, which, I mean, salaries are tied to the contracts. And that's a huge piece of it, so we know what that is.
It's, it's.
And once we get the cycle in place, now you kind of just mentioned, like if every year, you know, Amplify's up every three years, that money's allocated either towards Amplify or towards a progression.
Yeah, I think, I mean, it's all related to those projections, but it's the, this notion that any one of these eight is the magic way to budget, I think, is exceptionally flawed. I think it's gotta be a cafeteria-style, depending upon what it is you're, you're doing. And just being able to explain that these are the three primary mechanisms that we use, I think will be helpful to the community, so.
Okay, any questions about that? Great. Do we describe, sorry. Okay, Safety and Security. The school board, working through the superintendent, will support the development of a district-wide approach to school culture and safety that involves students and staff.
Yeah, so this started, the simple words we were using at the start of the year were see something, say something. We really established that culture at the beginning of the year with our morning meetings at Harold Martin or, you know, advisory periods, so forth and so on. It kind of transformed a little bit more at the middle high school in regards to the, the culture. We had one, two, three, four, five, one, two, three, four, five different speakers come in this year to the middle high school, from John Broderick to Chelsea Henquist, eighth grade only, Chris Pedulus, which was a motivational speaker, BioTrek, Claudia Tobin from Launch Now. We had, we just had multiple perspectives come in and speak to our kids, which we got a lot of positive feedback. On top of Career Day, which was a highly successful experience for, for our students, but also for our community to come in and, and work with our students. So we're gonna continue that. I know Carrie and Patrice, I know they looked into, I know Safety and Security kind of put that program aside, but they really liked the foundation of, what's the school Connecticut?
New. Newtown?
Newtown, yes.
We're on the same page, yeah.
Promise?
Danny Hook.
Thank you. Some of the foundational stuff we're already working in. And Carrie and Patrice are really starting to emphasize some behavioral, cultural pieces that we're noticing. And we're gonna, Amy, I, I know you two were a part of that meeting. Amy talked about something she's gonna bring from Merrimack in regards to working with your students and how to transition them to school. So a lot going on in that area that I think we'll continue to, to really press upon. I think we're targeting next year for the speaker, so to speak, to be a K-12 one, which is always difficult. But we really wanted, there are some out there that, you know, are expensive, but the foundations talked about helping us with some of that too. So those are some of those goals in that area.
Great, any questions about that?
Thank you.
Yep.
The school board, working through the superintendent, will use a safety action plan to create a three-to-five-year safety plan implementation projection by the end of the 24, 25 school year.
So in your school board, non-public documents, I placed a Safety and Security document in there because of Safety and Security, hence, um, you're gonna have to zoom in on it, but we, the Safety and Security teams went, they broke out at building levels, basically through the references from Homeland Security in 2002, prioritized the list. And then you're gonna see high priority, medium priority, lower priority. You're gonna see what was purchased by the grants already. So you can really see the progress that we've made in that audit that we had when I first started and maybe some of the things that we still need to work towards, that we're still working on. But credit to that Safety and Secu- Security group, more about the breakout committees. I can share another document with, with you later. Basically, it's the committee work on how they rank and prioritize, whether it would be a swinging gate at the entrance or film on the windows, things that, I'm trying to leave some of them out, but some of those things that we were working towards. We got our walkie-talkies through the grants. So now, as I said, when we had the bus accident, we could communicate all the way down to the traffic circle. We can communicate with the middle high school. So that group has really worked away. And I guess if you're gonna rephrase the goal when you meet with Ms. Doyle, instead of having a, kind of like Rob said, if I'm gonna steal his, his thought process on three to five years, it's more about taking that list and just continuing to chip off and target when you're gonna do it rather than putting it in a timeframe.
Have we had three rounds of grants?
They're in there, they're labeled.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we have, great.
Dulcey, this is related to it.
Yep.
And I don't wanna jump the gun or be overly hopeful, but the discussion about entrance at the middle high school is ongoing. So just where we're at, Subcommittee has been meeting with a gentleman who's been doing the architectural work for us and spent a few redesigns. Chris Kelly's brought it to his.
Admin council.
Admin council. He brought it to the whole faculty today to get feedback. And we plan to bring it to Safety and Security for our next meeting with hopes to bring it to the board for June.
June.
Yeah. So something to think about moving into next year. And, you know, because it's predominantly an interior design, the costs are relatively low. So I'm pretty excited about the possibility that this may actually happen before I die.
I was gonna say, and I'm sad, it's gonna happen after.
No, it's really, it's really.
Sorry, let me reset.
I don't know how you wanna work that into that goal, but.
Okay, that's great.
That feels like.
Part of that.
Good messaging for like next year, too.
Yeah, that's great, continue to invest in that. Great.
Invest in it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Really exciting.
Comments, yeah, that's great, I'm excited. Two more remains, we get to look at it.
It's gonna be awesome.
I've been talking about it for years.
Okay, cool, thank you. Okay, next up, under Communication. The school board, working through the superintendent, will implement improved communications via diligent community, a board-led quarterly newsletter, and continue to improve budget materials, which may include a mailer.
Wow.
Go for it.
We did all of, we did a mailer. I thought it was great, it was super helpful. It's just the fax man.
Yep.
Like Rob just said, we have more information possibly than any other school district.
Yep.
On our website about budgeting and special education. And, you know, we have another school board newsletter that we're gonna be looking at tonight.
Yep.
So.
Yep.
Aside from like personally calling people up and having conversations.
Yep. I think we're continuing to improve our population of and usage of diligent community, right?
Yeah. Policies are on there.
Yep, community with policy library and the document library, which we can now move a bunch of stuff from budget over to. Great. I also will say, I think we've been trying to be reasonably coordinated, and this is a shout-out to, to Matt Stone, thank you, Matt. I think to get things posted both on the, the district website, on Facebook and a couple other, and to go out through principals to make sure that like, if we can update people on as many channels as possible, we can. Okay.
Yeah, I think the only thing that we really need to improve is getting our minutes up there for committees.
Yep.
We have a plan for that next year.
Yeah. Staying to date with committee minutes. Okay, great, awesome. Any other questions or thoughts about that?
Minutes are going up, it's just been a challenge with the way diligent, I just wanna clarify.
Yes, yes, they are going up. It's, yeah, it's just really cumbersome.
Yeah, great. I will say I'm really proud of our communications this year. I mean, there's always work to do. Okay, the school board will facilitate small group discussions with the community through the budgeting season. Guys, what are your thoughts on how we did? Sorry, that was loud. Anyone? Uh, I think we potentially oversaturated the community with small, uh, small group discussions. I think we had ten, right?
Yeah, probably. I will say that the, shockingly, I think, the tours and budget discussions were not well-attended.
Yep.
Which I know that our staff was actually sad about because they wanted to show people what we're talking about.
Yep. I think that some of the other community events did pretty well, like when we did the senior, the senior, the pre-senior lunch, Jonathan. That was obviously great because that was something we were gonna go to. We went right after Cookies with Cass, we got a bunch of people, Rotary, it sounds like was great.
We already had a crowd.
Yeah, right, like I think things that were, they were tied to where people were gonna be was great. And then maybe we offer one or two.
How was the library?
Library the week before, I think it's also people want to know closer to the date.
PTA was great.
Yeah, PTA was great.
Potentially, just a few other, I don't know, maybe the Legion as a host site.
Yep, yeah.
And we offered to both.
We offered to both political parties, we presented at Hoppin' and Dems, the GOP did not take us up on the offer. So, yeah, I think that's a great point.
Yeah, I think we should do significantly less of these.
Yeah.
Because I think it's, because there's other staff whose time is being taken up, and if we have two people there and five staff people, I don't think it's respectful of their time if we keep doing this.
Yeah.
They have a lot of extracurricular things that they're doing.
I think that it's helpful then to like, yeah, like the tours, we're not gonna do that again.
I think if we're going to Slusser or Rotary or some other place where there's a group there.
Yeah.
And we can do a quick presentation.
Yep.
That makes sense to me.
Yeah.
I think those are all the ones, just looking, that were the successes.
Yeah, I would still do maybe one or two the week before, but I think having that just be board members, and even one board member, I think is okay.
As much as I hate to say it, I think we should go back to COVID Zoom style.
Oh, yeah, that's a good one, too.
Just time-wise.
Yep.
You know, maybe two, one hour, you know, do the presentation, open for an hour, do the presentation, open for an hour.
Yeah.
Yep.
Maybe a little more flexible for people who want to come in.
Yeah, that's a good point. I think the other thing was, we did a lot of stuff after 5:00 PM, before the break, like weeks before, right, between PTA and some of the school tours, and then the week before was only during the day, because we were trying to diversify when people could come, but I think it seemed like we weren't offering a range of times. So I think trying to make sure we collapse it and figure it out is a good idea.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, thank you all, I know it was a lot of time, so I really appreciate you doing what you're doing, too.
But we tried the thing.
We did, we tried. Okay, culture and climate. The school board working through the superintendent will proactively address goal one of the culture and climate section of the strategic plan. The Hoppin' and School District will strive to create an emotionally safe, equitable, and inclusive environment for all students through the action steps laid out under the goal's sole objective.
So MTSS, which we're partnering with Branching Minds.
Which stands for?
Multiple, multiple.
Multi-tiered.
Systems of support.
Who's gonna get it right?
I know. And so we've partnered with Branching Minds, and first part of that implementation process is a lot of backwork that Mr. Stone has been working on with Ms. Hibbert in regards to systems and data and information. We are, actually, the email went out today in regards to picking a date for our implementation staff members to get trained for two hours. So that work is on its way. Also, Amy Doyle is aware and also understands what's going on. The dates for the trainings are in July and August, and then really gonna be the kickoff in September, which was really our timeframe anyways. Again, we talked about Portrait of a Learner, and it becoming embedded in the school communities at the next steps.
Great.
What is Branching Minds?
It's one of, I'll call it a company, it's the easiest way to describe it, they help really on the system side, let our systems speak together, whether it's scoring or behavioral analysis, and then their program runs basically areas of improvement or growth or gaps that are happening with the students, that can be discussed far more than this piece of information being over here, and you know what I mean, it really consolidates the information of a student.
So it's looking at all the different test scores?
Well, tests and anecdotal stuff, too. Like teachers can fill out.
Behavioral records.
Yeah, stuff like that, so, and it combines it.
Yep. Okay. The other thing that I think we should highlight is I think that Dan did some work at the start of the year, right, as Noah mentioned, we have a lot of students that are, spend a lot of time in athletics, and Dan did some work to, I think, try to also loop in the coaches into a safe.
A lot of onboarding training on that one, especially with coaches that were not part of the staff.
Yeah.
Expectations, ground rules, setting, safe environments. If we have, what's the program called that Jake's launching? Mr. Morrow, yeah, what's that called, it's Letters Two.
What's that?
S.A.
Student Agency Project.
Yeah, so they launched a new one where we are now having buddy systems with our transitioning fifth grader, sixth graders, seventh graders.
We talked about this, didn't we?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so now they went and met their buddies, they're gonna talk with them over the summer, they're gonna meet with them before school starts, so basically every, not every, but about 30 sixth graders have an actual buddy going to them at eyes.
Oh, great.
Yeah. We talked about moving that towards one to one or two to one, but this year they targeted 30 students to have buddies to transition.
That's great, cool.
Yep.
So, I kind of, I like this, it sounds like what Branching Minds is gonna allow you folks to do is like all points of contact for a student to sort of have access as their team, right, because they're the team of adults that are caring for a child, educating a child, if there are concerns, right? Like I often think that there might be a behavioral concern, but people may be dealing with behavioral issues or not talking to people dealing with maybe epidemic issues or, right?
Yep.
And so there's no.
Yeah.
Sort of way for those people to communicate, say, wait a minute, this should be a flag, instead of it's just kind of one issue and one person dealing with it. Johnny.
Yep.
Is having, you know, over here, and now we're looping in coaches, which I think is phenomenal, because for so many kids, that's their person.
Another data point. Yeah, it, we saw challenges here when I first started was the way Harold Martin was handling things, then when they transitioned here, they were handling things differently. So this is going to allow some more of that systemic approach. And as you said, as a teacher, you know, sometimes, I was a unified art teacher, so I didn't see a lot of the behavioral sometimes, because.
They want to be there.
Exactly, right. But now this portfolio of performance that can be put together, there can be different flags that, you know, that you can, like you said, oh, well, in my class, this is what works well, and when we get to wraparound team, there's more information.
And allowing everybody on that team to kind of figure out, problem solve for the student.
Yeah.
Great. Love it.
What SAP? What's?
Student Agency Project?
Agency?
Yeah.
Yeah, we gotta say the words.
I know, but I'm saying for you.
Okay, great, terrific. Okay, great. Um, okay, so anything else about that? People have questions?
How do you get informal student input? I mean, this all sounds great, don't get me, but you can still be, you know, you're in the building, you think as a teacher, everything's good. Like I can sit in a classroom of 25 kids and think, everybody's getting along, but somewhere in that classroom, somebody's not getting along, and I have no idea, because kids are good at creating environments that are not inviting. So, I mean, I think that's the real challenge, is how do we know? Because there is the Omera code, where nobody wants to say much, and that's not helpful.
Yep.
Sorry to throw that monkey wrench out there, but the reality is, is there's that, there's that blind spot that we've always had, and you know.
Well, and it's, and it's a great question, so I've thought about it, too, and I'm saying this as a board member, not as an administrator or teacher, obviously, but it's like, you can do the see something, say something stuff, but I think that really is more tied to like safe, like what I would think of as safety, and this tends to be, I think, be a lot more in terms of the environment at the school, more socio-emotional, as well as safety, but like the other part is really hard, because kids go through a lot every day, so I think it's a great question.
Well, and Rob, is that something that we look at as, you know, a culture and climate goal in addition, like how, how are we changing not just safety, but how are we sort of changing or evaluating, I guess I should say, the culture of the building? And are students, are we being inclusive? Are kids feeling like this is their safe space, and what to do if it's not for another student? Like are we giving them the tools to say, hey, I know you guys used to have the buddy bench, and like, come sit with us, like that sort of movement at the lower levels?
Right.
Well, I think it's, it's all about teachers developing the, what like.
Say that again?
It's all about the teachers, I think, I, or at least I see it in the school right now, the teachers who really get to know students on a personal level, students will come to them for prob, with their problems, and I see it happen. And obviously, it's hard if you have 25 kids in a classroom to get to know every single one, but I think it's a cultural thing. It's teachers getting to know their students on a super, super personal level, and that's how you, you get to learn, and get, or get to ensure that it's a safe space for everyone.
I think it's hard sometimes by high school, I've found that kids kind of like have, if they've had a few bad experiences, or like felt uncomfortable in certain classrooms, that they kind of withdraw by the time they're in like ninth or 10th grade, and then it's hard for them to like believe that saying something would be able to make a difference. But I think that like, I don't know, I mean, relationships with teachers is important, but it's sort of hard, like once you reach that age. Not that I don't think anything can be done about it, but.
Okay.
Yeah, I think like the MTSS and the wraparound teams, really, we're looking at most often kids who have been like identified, you know, which is great, like that is, it's happening in hospitals, and you get lots of people on board, but I think this is something that we should continue to look at, like it should continue to be.
Yep.
A goal and a focus.
Yeah, I think that MTSS system, especially looking at, just kind of quickly looking up, this Branching Minds, is going to allow more kids potentially to get some support, because more people are talking, they're not siloed.
Right.
Like people are going to be able to kind of see if there is an issue maybe in another class.
Right.
I don't know.
Yep.
But I do agree that there, you know, there's always going to be that issue, and I think it's kind of one of those, running a question that you're like, how do I, how do we?
Right.
Well, student vote, student voice and student feedback. How do I say? Creating a safe spot to give a student feedback, right?
Right, we've talked about that.
Yeah.
Lots of times.
And the opportunity to share amongst faculty without violating HIPAA.
Yeah.
Which is a problem, you know, I mean, my first teaching experience, every day, we had quote-unquote milk break, faculty met in the library, the kids went down to the cafeteria, and you talked about kids, but it was a different environment, but there were not a lot of places where, you know, things didn't get left. If something was cooking, everybody knew it, and I mean, everybody knew it. And we don't necessarily have those things, and there are those stone walls because of privacy. So it becomes difficult where something could be happening in one classroom, but not happening elsewhere, or not being known elsewhere.
Okay.
And that's, that's not good for the kid, and it's, makes it difficult for the teacher, because if you don't have that knowledge, it might change the way you interact with that student.
Yeah.
Probably not surprisingly, you know, I listened to this conversation, and I think about if we had no cell phones from beginning bell to the last bell in school, it would take away this whole area where people are existing that nobody can see. Also, I think, you know, I was just reading an article this morning about how in schools that have gone phone-free, one of the thing, one of the effects that phones have is they take away the ability to have conversation, to interact, and I think that so much communication happens in cyberspace as opposed to in the natural world, when there are phones, to me, that goes to culture, it goes to safety, it goes to a lot of these issues that we're talking about. It doesn't solve the problems, but I do think that there could be a huge benefit along the lines of things that we're talking about here.
I absolutely agree with you.
Thanks, thanks for bringing that up, Rob.
You're welcome.
Very important. You guys have done so much more to like, like look for the student voice since I've gone on the school board, and it's made it so much better, I think.
I, I mean, I think the other, just one other thing to add to this, is it's not just like touchy-feely emotional stuff, like you cannot learn if you do not feel safe.
Yeah.
You know, if it's about learning, the best way for kids to learn is to get their needs met.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Okay, I will.
Went deep on that one, guys.
That's a good one, that's a good one, that's a great area. Thank you, everyone, that was a great discussion, I'll figure out how to put together my notes on that one. Anything else there? Thanks, guys, that was great. Okay. Sustainability, slightly different topic. The school board working through the Energy Management Committee and using work from Resilient Building Group and Energy Management Consultants will prioritize and down select the first round of projects to mitigate and minimize energy outlay and cost for the Hoppin' and School District. I would say that the reports that we got from EMC, applied in terms of the broader thing, has been, started to be incorporated into the work of CIP. And then I think EMC, the committee, also asked for a few scenarios from EMC, the company, to do in terms of looking at a few different scenarios and levels of work, to basically give to you guys in terms of a energy management lens that you can use to think about how you might structure projects across, of course, the CIP and otherwise. But it's, that work is happening in real time, which is great. Any other questions there?
No, I mean, I just, I think that the recurring theme is this sort of the tolerance for a sort of short-term expense for the benefit of long, saving long-term expense, and I think that's just a theme that just comes up in CIP all the time.
Yep. Yep. Great. Okay. Okay. Personnel. The school board working with the superintendent will support resource allocation to implement a multi-tiered system of support. Do we have anything else?
We purchased the program, they're matching it.
Yeah. Okay, anything else to add there, Mike? I think we have it all, I just need to move it around. Okay. The school board will negotiate a new three-year contract in good faith with the HEA Union.
Done and done. It was passed.
Great, and the.
Overwhelmingly passed.
The school board will negotiate a new three-to-five-year contract in good faith with the Teamsters Union, four years, and check. Great, okay.
Overwhelmingly passed.
Yeah.
Makes you have a note.
Yeah. So those are all of our goals for the year, so I think we're actually, there's stuff, I think that we will have ample things to talk through at the retreat, obviously, but I'm, this board, I think this year has worked incredibly hard, and that tied with the, I think, the incredibly hard work as the district, I feel pretty, pretty proud of what we've done thus far, knowing there are six weeks left. Any other thoughts on that? Great. Okay, great work, guys. All right, next up, the 2026 Annual District Meeting Date. And we talked about this before.
Yep.
May 8th, Thursday, is Neil's last date. He had gone through and drafted a budget committee schedule that Rob shared with us for 2025, 2026, and one of the things we want to do is not have to move the school district meeting date ever again. So I just want to talk through, there's really just two things that we need to do. I put a terrible screenshot, sorry, guys, in the board materials. But if you take a look at it, it is, if I can find it, I can get someplace in there, yeah. I think really the discussion for us is, we have traditionally, our options are basically to have school district meeting what's set right now with Budget Committee as March 7th, which is the first Saturday back from vacation, or to have it the following week, the 14th. If we do it later, there is ample room, I think, based off of this, I need to go through and Laura, I'll ask you to also second check that we have the number of days, and 30 and 20 and all the things, but do people have a preference?
Based on how much work goes into it, I would like more than one week following the break.
Fair.
Okay.
I just, I think it went so much better this year.
Yeah.
Yeah, having two weeks.
I mean, unintended, unintended outcome of it, it was just so much better.
Yeah, I think.
What is the, what is the likely sports?
We do better the further out we are.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
Be in between seasons.
Okay.
Yep.
Versus being at championships.
Yes, yeah. Yes. Yep. I would also say, I think, given the context of what we just talked about with small group meetings, if we do less, I think we can do a little bit before school break.
Yeah.
And there's obviously lots of people in town who don't have children in the school district who aren't affected by school break, but the more that we consolidate and do it after break, the better. I really, really think. Okay.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to vote on that, but I think it's more of a, Suzanne, we're just saying that instead of having it the Saturday right after that break, that we'd have it two Saturdays after. So instead of March seventh, we'd have it March fifteenth, just to give us more time. Yes, thank you. March fourteen, sorry, fourteen, fourteen, fourteen. Yep.
Saturday, March fourteen.
Nine AM.
Twenty-six.
Yes. Okay, so if that works for everyone, we will confirm and make do the dates, check all the things.
Yep. And it definitely aligns because the public hearing that they have scheduled right now is February fourth. So we have more than twenty-five days to stay there.
Great. Terrific. Great. Way to go. All right. The other thing that I want to do just on the back of this is I have, we cannot, we had found out at the last board meeting that no one's going to be here for our June meeting, as people might recall, for the the June third, right? No one was going to be.
No, it's the next one, the.
June seventeenth. So we're talking about collapsing those two into something on either June tenth or the Tuesday or June twelfth. Do people have a preference?
So just to reiterate, June third was because my daughter's first communion is that night.
Correct.
I can't be here. You guys can still have a meeting if you would like.
Well, no, we're not having you miss your last meeting.
It's trying, Mike.
I've tried repeatedly. Okay. So then it would be that second week. We need to figure something out.
Yeah. So the tenth. Okay. How do people look for the tenth?
I'm sorry.
Be June tenth or June twelve?
You can't make the tenth.
No. And I, I cannot make the tenth.
Woof.
I think you just have it on the third.
I think I will also say, thank you so much for your input. I think it's hard to have our last regularly scheduled meeting before we go into summer break. Be before that, like two weeks out before the end of the year is wrapped. I think it's nice to get a little more time on the docket. So I do appreciate your feedback. So thank you. Okay.
June eleventh? Wednesday, June eleventh.
Can we do it Monday?
Um, I think there might be, is there a select board meeting?
June eleventh, is that correct?
Budget committee is the eleventh, yes.
Yeah.
So then Monday?
Yeah, and there's also Monday. Can we do it back to back with select board if there's select board meeting? Yeah, it's fine.
I can do Monday.
Monday, the ninth?
Can everyone make Monday, the ninth?
Yes. Hold on.
So not, are we doing the third or not?
Not doing the third. We would drop the third and move to the ninth.
We dropped the third and the seventeen. Which I think is fine.
So we would do it at the ninth of when?
What?
Ninth of June.
Five thirty?
Five thirty.
Look good. I'm writing in my calendar.
All right. We, if that works for everyone, that we'll go toe to toe with select board. I think that's fine. I can give Brenea a heads up. Jody, if you can update the calendar invites, then that would be extraordinarily jazzy.
So you're going with the ninth?
Yeah, we're going to drop the seventeenth, move the third to the ninth.
Should we go then?
What?
Should we go then?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, you'll have just graduated. You're welcome to come.
This is Noah's last one.
Well, maybe I'll be here the night.
No.
But I have baseball the next one, like game. I skipped baseball today.
You can skip that yet.
All right.
It's okay. We're recognizing you for tonight. Okay.
You're not kidding, right?
Yeah, so come to the night. Yeah, so come, come on the night. Come on the night.
All right, I'll come on the night.
You too. Great. We love you. Uh, which I'm probably not supposed to say. Okay. Okay. Great. All right, moving on. We have the HES contract. This is our second and final read as a reminder. Any, any questions or comments about this? Because it's related to personnel, we have to go into non-public, but this file is in the twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-six non-public folder of the board. Do we have a motion to approve the 2025, 2026 HES contract nomination slate?
Correct.
No move.
Oh. I'll second it.
Okay. Any discussion reminder, we need to go into non-public, which we absolutely can, but. Okay. Thank you to our HES workers.
Yeah.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Great. And I just say our HES staff.
As Jim O'Brien said it four years ago, and I'll use it forever, are essential employees.
Yes. Highly critical. Next up, we are doing a first read this evening in the same file folder of the admin non-union Teamsters staffing contract. So if you look in there, there's three tabs. Go ahead and take a look. Again, we would go into non-public for any of this, but take a look. Also call me if you want, but otherwise we can, we can talk as a board if anyone wants to. Does anyone want to go into non-public to discuss? Okay. We'll also look at this at the second meeting in May. Okay. Do you want to talk about the Dave Shory Scholarship Trust, Mike?
Laura's been kind of doing the work on this, but if you remember, not all of you attend awards night, but last year, the two thousand twenty-three class gave a scholarship in memory of Dave Shory. And now they are looking forward to moving that to a permanent thing rather than just a one-off. Laura can talk about the, I'll call the rules behind it if you would like, just to.
And before you get there, for people who might be watching at home, who might be new to the district, can you remind us all who Dave was?
I, I can.
Yes, great. Perfect. Go for it. Thanks.
The Dave Shory Scholarship Trust that we are trying to create tonight has an application that with it, that comes with it. And on the application has a blurb and it says, who was David Shory? David Shory dedicated eleven years to teaching at Hopkin Middle High School and approximately forty years of his life to educating students in New Hampshire. He taught a range of courses from AP Calculus to middle school pre-engineering. Mr. Shory was a welcoming, warm and kind to all students at Hopkin, not just those he had in class. Everyone in school knew he was always ready to give smiles to strangers and assist anyone in need. He was a dedicated teacher who had an amazing ability to educate all students and he truly believed all students could learn. He cared deeply about student success and would do whatever he could to support them in their learning. Mr. Shory was also a committed Hawks fan, running the scoreboard for basketball games and offering continued support of multiple school sports teams. In fact, there were few basketball games that he did not attend. He will forever be remembered for his stories of living in Japan, his college basketball career, flipping houses and opening his family restaurant, Shory's Grilled Cheese and Ice Cream in Franklin. Mr. Shory was an easygoing, hardworking and compassionate man as both a teacher and a person, and he is sorely missed.
That's wonderful.
So they have asked to make it very similar to the Michelle Potmar Memorial Scholarship that we created earlier this year. It will be a trust fund that pays scholarships out of principal and interest every year. It will be started by donations from Class of twenty twenty-three and Class of twenty twenty-four. And the Shory family themselves would also like to contribute to this initial donation. And they asked that we approve it and they would like to give out the first seven hundred and fifty dollar award on the May twenty-second awards night.
Wow, that's amazing.
So we'll move this, if this is approved by the board, we'll move it through with New Hampshire Trust. The trustees of the trust funds in town are already on board and we'll get that ready for May twenty-second. They already have an applicant and somebody that has is worthy of scholarships.
That's wonderful.
Do you need an official motion?
We do.
We do.
Do I have a motion to approve the creation of the David Shory Scholarship Trust Fund?
Yes.
Second.
Any, any discussion?
It's wonderful. Thank you for doing the legwork.
Good day, Shory.
Thank you, Dave Shory.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you so much. They'll be very excited.
Yeah.
That's lovely.
Sorry, I forgot to have this formally added to the agenda, but there's one quick other discussion that I wanted to have before we move to policy and close out the board.
Yep.
So one of the things that we wanted to get rolling, my apologies, was to talk through committees. And so, because I think there's some committees that will continue to meet through the end of the year. And so I was really excited to sort of talk through this and I've been, you know, I think hopefully people have been thinking through it and have sort of touched base. So just so everyone remembers, we don't have any contracts that are up next year, so there's no negotiating teams. What we do have is policy, curriculum and assessment, CIP, safety and security, EMC, finance and budget. And we have traditionally in. In the past, had a wellness committee, but the board has not sent a board delegate for two years. So.
The district still has a wellness committee.
Yes, the district still has it.
Yeah.
The district still has.
As required by policy.
Yes, that's right. We just don't have, we have not sent a board member. So for policy, this year it's Andrew and Jonathan. It is.
To stay on.
Okay.
Unsurprisingly.
Yep. This is a great thing for, I'm gonna look at Suzanne, for first year board members. To do. Could you like to do on policy?
Yeah.
Okay. Jonathan, are you okay rolling off policy? Terrific. Okay, great. Okay. And Amy.
It's weird. No one ever stays.
I'm, I'm sort of for tears. And then Amy, Amy Doyle will also sit in on that. And that's also just for everyone's knowledge. The admin team has been being involved in policy as well and that's becoming and will become, I think, continue to be a common practice. All right, curriculum and assessment, which will also be an Amy admin thing. So Andrew, do you want to stick around?
I do.
Okay, Suzanne.
You and I are going to see a lot of.
I know, like, because I sort of feel like you don't want me on CIP or finance, like, that's not my wheelhouse. I don't know. I mean, I'm willing to learn. But.
Come join me.
I, yeah, I feel like curriculum and assessment is kind of my niche, so I would love to work with you.
That'd be awesome.
That's okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right.
Be thrilled. I'll be sad to make chatty conversation with our teachers, but they will appreciate me not dragging minutes. So that's okay. Okay, CIP, this past year for twenty-four, twenty-five with Jonathan and Norm, with Norman off. I think my understanding was that Rob, you're moving in. Does that work for everybody?
Great.
And I love CIP. It's a tough, tough thing, but I will look forward to talking to you guys about it. It's wonderful. And Jim Rozicky is the the key member of the district admin team that attends that. And obviously the superintendent comes as well and VA. Yeah. Safety and security. This was Rob and Jonathan this year. Rob, you want to stick with it? It's a quarterly meeting?
Sure.
Great. I would love that, given that this will oversee the potential entrance project. Jonathan, if you are not feeling like you are wedded to this, I would love to be on safety and security.
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yep.
Great. Is anyone else dying? Thanks. EMC. Oh, and Carrie is the, the admin rep for safety and security. For EMC, this is another Jim Rozicky.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I'll stick around on that one.
And then Andrea. Energy management. Yeah. Yep. And then if you guys are good with it, Andrew and I could stick with that unless anyone is jumping in.
I never work with them.
That's right. Yeah, apparently. It's worth noting, we have flagged this, I think, at this, at a meeting before. We will talk at the board, board retreat in June about like now that CIP has the work from EMC, the company and EMC, the committee are there, like what are the two lanes for each and what does that look like so that we're not duplicating work? But we can have that discussion and figure out what those lanes look like. Finance and budget. All right. Rob?
Look at you.
Terrific. And do you want to stay as the budget rep?
Yes.
Amazing. Jonathan, I heard.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Going, going back to your roots from Budget Committee.
Oh, man.
It's gonna feel like going home. That's right. And Amy, obviously, the new superintendent and Laura spend a lot of time in and around committee as well. Okay. Do we want to send a board member to wellness? Are we okay not sending a board member? It's interim meeting, you go, right?
Yep.
Laura, do you want to just report back to us?
Sure.
When is that typically meet?
It's quarterly. It, it doesn't have a defined date at this point.
But like time of day.
Afternoon, two thirty, three o'clock-ish typically. Oh, mostly teachers and staff.
Yeah, I just don't like trying that.
To figure out.
My volunteer, could I get there?
Yeah.
Do you guys meet in person? Right now, we meet in person. I think I am certainly open to having it be, you know, on, on Google Meet instead to have everybody have it easier to get there. However, not all of our staff that are on it have devices to be able to do a, a, you know, virtual meeting. Yeah. So it is in person. We move it, it's been at Harold Martin in the conference room this past year. And we also have a health, health trust rep that actually comes and sits on the wellness committee too. So our May meeting, if, is coming up and we're going to be looking at items to do for twenty-five, twenty-six. If someone wants to just come in and see if you feel like it would be a benefit. Wonderful. We also are trying to get some community involvement because that's part of the policy.
Okay. Does anyone, do you want, do you want to try?
Yeah, I can try to.
You can try and just be.
What is, what is your work schedule? Is there times?
You're not out till three, but if it's a quarterly thing, we'll, we'll see, right?
Okay.
Because it's something that I can be like.
Yep.
Just got my, my chairs for the last fifteen, twenty minutes.
I believe it normally starts at three o'clock.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, let's try and we'll see. Great. Okay, so chairs of committees, if you have upcoming meetings before the end of year, please make sure you're looping in all the people. All right? Terrific. Okay. Last but not least, policy.
Policy. Yep. So we have a bunch of second reads tonight. And I put in, I felt very proud of myself figuring out how to put in briefing notes. So the policies, DAF, Administration of Federal Grants, EHAB, Data Governance and Security. Oh, I skipped EC in my write-up. EC, Buildings and Grounds Management and JFABD, Admissions of Homeless Children and Unaccompanied Youth. Those four policies were policies that we already had in place. All of them are required by statute and all had statutory updates. So this is our, your second time seeing them. Policies DAFB, which is Equivalence and Instructional Staff and Materials, and ICHA Summer Activities are also both required by statutes. They are new policies that we did not have on the books. So if there are any questions about those.
And these are our second reads, so we will have, they will get published live tonight and then we'll do a third and final read at the end of May.
I just had questions about the IHCA, the, the summer activities.
Yep.
Right? And so I'm still learning, but the ED three oh six rules, right, are kind of in flux on the regular, right? And there's been some proposals, but nothing new has been adopted. Am I right?
Right.
A bunch of stuff went to committee, but it sort of was stalled for this previous year. I had questions because the summer activities in the three oh six rules that I'm seeing, a couple of things, that on the New Hampshire School Board Association, that recommended policy has not been updated since two thousand fourteen.
Yep.
And if you look at the ED three oh six rules, the summer activities is in reference to ELOs. And I actually don't think that this policy addresses the actual. Ooh, the, the, yeah, what?
Yeah, so these address, I mean, you can see down below.
And I did, I did all the research to that the actual where this is, it's like bullet point, like E underneath ELOs. And ELOs, right, are talking about opportunities to earn credit. And the last one is like summer activities in relation to earning credit over the summer.
Yeah.
So that's my question in terms of like this doesn't really address earning credit.
Yeah, we have a separate policy for ELOs so that if it is regarding earning credit, that would fall under the yellow policy. The summer activities policy, we basically are just asked to say, yes, we think you should continue learning in the summer. So I don't think that the purpose of this policy was not to get it aspect.
Right, but that's what it's nestled under in the ED three oh six rules.
Right.
It's under that to go like even on the list of, I had questions because the board association hasn't updated it since two thousand fourteen.
Right, because I don't think it had.
So in multiple different places, either it's not even there on the ED three oh six rules, or it's nestled under the ELO. And so I was like, I don't think this addresses, I mean, and the other part is I have issues with having a policy where it's like, read a book if we're not helping to facilitate that in any way, shape or form. Like to have a policy where we say.
And I think that's the why it is. So this is the, what I found interesting about working with Jonathan in policy this year is that, you know, if you have it in policy, you have to do it. And so sometimes it is better to have a policy that is going to be, correct me if I'm wrong, like, oh, it is not going to.
That's restrictive.
Yeah, like.
And I appreciate that, but again, I would argue that doesn't mean we have to do it. And so I would say, how are we encouraging students to have a plan for summer activities?
Well, so it says.
Encourage is not actually encouraging.
Yeah, it just says that we encourage. It does not say we shall. So it's like when you're looking at it.
Some AP courses give summer packets, some other course.
That's what I'm interested, right? Like, what are we doing?
EL, ELA classes give summer reading. We didn't have anything on the book, so this is what we're essentially doing without a policy.
Can we touch base with the School Board Association and see if this actually is still?
It is still their policy. Yeah, it's in, so it's in, I can show you.
I, I, I did, it has not been touched since two thousand fourteen, and it doesn't match up with the New Hampshire three oh six rules.
Right, yeah, this is, this is a little bit.
I called them, they're super, they'll talk to.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm saying, is like, maybe we can talk after, but my issue being that it has not been updated.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah.
On the actual.
Right.
Website.
Yeah, totally, yeah.
And it does not reflect, it's actually printed on the like, Gen four, New Hampshire Gen four.
Yeah.
Three oh six rules.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, you all know your own policy.
Yeah. We have a policy meeting on Thursday. All right, so I will flag this one.
Awesome.
Um, and the rest of them.
If you have questions between now and the next meeting, because ideally at the next meeting, this one sounds like there will be discussion around it, but add in the other runs, if you have questions, please get them to policy prior to the next meeting. Yes, sir.
Get them to policy right now.
Yes.
So the equivalence in instructional staff and materials um, under A1, the maintenance of effort. I think this, like, we have a class-sized policy for the elementary schools, but we don't have a policy that supports our vision of programmatic budgeting for the middle high school. This sort of speaks to that, so as you're reviewing, maybe have a discussion about whether or not this supports that notion through a policy, not just our expectation.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And one, on the one hand, it does, and then the other, it doesn't, because of the, or attendance makes such allocations unfeasible. I don't know what the heck that means.
Right.
I mean, I know what it means, but I don't know what it means in application.
Right. Okay.
It would be good if it could be in there.
Which policy was that specifically?
DAFB.
Yep.
The equivalence in instructional staff and materials.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That one was a weird one.
Okay. Okay. Anything else on any of the other policies? Again, if you have any questions, please send them to Andrea and now Suzanne. All righties? Woo-hoo. All right, with that, guys, I think we're at the end of our current business. Mike, what's up?
We got a lot going on in our district right now. Laura is gonna run out of breath going over all the hiring. But in regards to hiring this year, um, it has been, uh, I'm excited for the people that we have coming on board. I, I am going to see, say, as you're going through nomination packets, that uh, last year, we saved nearly five hundred thousand dollars. I have to say that again. This year, we have targeted a few areas that have been struggling over the past couple of years. Meaning you might see some higher, um, higher on the salary scale this time around, because we really needed to target some of those areas for support and growth. But we have, we have balanced it pretty well with uh, up and coming young professionals, new to the profession, uh, as well as some veteran people, so. Without further ado, if you want to begin.
Sure.
Reading.
We, as Mike said, we have a significant amount of new hires tonight. Most of them are for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. I am very happy to say that we found a school psychologist, which is a position that has been vacant for a few years, I heard. Jessica White will be filling our school psychologist role.
And where is that, which building is that for?
District wide.
Yeah, it is district wide, but right now more middle high school.
Okay, great.
Laura, Laura's been covering Harold, um, in.
No, yeah. Lot of alum.
I don't know.
Okay.
Conway.
Yep.
Celine Gordon, do you, do you need to know what they're replacing? Do you need me to say that out loud?
With the position.
Okay. Celine Gordon will be taking the one-year fifth-grade teaching position at Maple Street School.
Great.
And Cassidy John will be filling the one-year leave of absence position um, in kindergarten in Harold Martin.
Great.
Cheyenne Welch, who uh, currently is a IA for us. Recently finished her degree and became an IA, and has, is being nominated as the replacement for Terry Greedy, first-grade teacher. Ila Hino has been a long-term, or a substitute for us for a while, has done some ESY, has done some IA work. She is being nominated as a kindergarten teacher. She is completing her master's program in, as we speak, essentially, in May.
Amazing.
Jacob Bosch, high school English teacher. This is the new one-point-oh English position that we um, created in the budget process. Allison Smith, eighth-grade English teacher, taking over for Patricia Walton, who is retiring. Christine Lightsey, second-grade teacher for, and replacing Meredith Post, who um, her resignation is later, is a little bit later tonight. Two more. Uh, Nicole Sloan will be taking the new HMS Special Educator position. Created this year. And then lastly, um, Rodney Nabrega is being nominated as the new maintenance worker for Teamsters, who, and he's replacing Joseph Parent.
Wow.
So we have been busy.
Yeah, great. Excellent.
Any questions on the new hires?
No.
Okay. For resignations tonight, Meredith Post, second-grade teacher, effective date is June thirtieth. And Victoria Perrigo has been a part-time IA at the middle high school. Um, she has been off quite a bit this semester. She's back at school, and she has unfortunately told us she's not returning after school is done, so her effective date is tonight.
Okay.
And then finally, current employees with additional contracts. Ann Calder is an IA at the high school. She will be doing some additional work after school for extracurricular activities for one of our students who was participating.
Amazing. Way to go hiring teams.
At all the buildings and.
It's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work.
A lot of work.
A lot of work.
We're getting them locked up now, and May is, is really great.
It's huge. Great.
We have no donations or financials tonight.
Uh, the financial update from me will be in regards to our fund balance discussion that we have at this time of the year that comes around. I know finance, we're gonna schedule a meeting here soon. Uh, met with Mr. Rozicky today, talked to Matt Stone. Laura, uh, we're gonna be putting together our lists, uh, basically of, of things that the board can vote on, either to move forward with, or whether you move it towards a contingency fund. We want to have all that information for you. We're gonna have um, a draft for May twenty-second, so that you can then make a, what is it?
May twenty.
May twentieth, and then you can make a determination at June tenth on what you want to do, so.
June ninth.
So any of these dates we have coming up, those meetings, you're gonna have information provided, and we'll go from there. But um, we'll have a list of multiple things, whether it's from the CIP, or whether it's hanging, it's been hanging out there on stuff. And you guys get to make those decisions.
Great.
Super.
Great, okay. Anything else on our consent agenda?
Superintendent's update, Teacher Appreciation Week.
Thank you, teachers. Yes.
You know, it's, it's always interesting to see, uh, I sent an email on Sunday, uh, as I was returning from vacation, and just to wear jeans all week, as you can see, we're casual, most of us. And I thi, I think it might be my, the most thank yous I've gotten all year, so. Uh, little things go a long way in a teacher's role when they don't have to think about their outfits, but um, definitely what they do all, all year long, not just the teachers, it's really staff appreciation week. And, and as they've said, I mean, you guys were, it was pretty neat to hear you talk about relationships there, and I think I've been saying it since I've been here. Relationships that our teachers develop um, is pretty remarkable, so. Uh, I hope they have a good week in their buildings, and, and the little things that the principals in the buildings are doing can go a long way, but we certainly thank them.
Yep. Thank you to our teachers and all our staff. Great. Okay. And with that, do I have a motion to accept uh, the consent agenda as presented?
So much.
Second.
Any discussion? Are all those in favor? Okay, bye. Great, okay. Aye. Uh, yeah, is that a aye? Did I have a full aye? Great, thank you. Any opposed? Thank you. I know we're almost there. Guys, I have one more thing before we go through committee updates, uh, that I forgot. Uh, we have our draft newsletter in the folder. Um, thank you, everyone, for getting all of their reports over um, this lovely weekend, um, or Friday. Um, and then also Andrea for putting this into Canvas, since we know that's not my strong suit. So the things that we're covering just over nose is announcing Amy Doyle, um, an Amplify and Strong Reader update, talking about a finance update coming out of the school district meeting, the special education IEP process, and important end-of-year dates for people who are jazzed to know what are, what are the big things coming up. I think this is great. Um, we co-wrote it together, but please review it. Um, let me know if you have any edits, changes. Otherwise, Matt Stone will be looking to send it out, I'm hoping, on Thursday. If possible. Thank you. I'll send you a note, but ideally via Amplify, and then we'll ask Susan to post it as well, and get on the website, all the things. All right?
Bye, Carrie.
Sound good?
Yes.
Terrific. All right. With that, committee updates, party people, let's do this. Policy, anything else that I want you to talk about?
Nope, we have an upcoming meeting.
Great, CNA, nope, nothing for the rest of the year. CIP, anything else new? We just had a public hearing. Uh, safety and security, Rob, you're meeting, we're meeting.
We're meeting this month, like um, we are meeting on the twentieth.
Wow, great, okay, cool. Um, EMC, we met right before um, right before break. Uh, there's a couple of things we talked about. One is at the meeting prior, we had talked about if there was any work that we could do. It's particularly at the middle high school, trying to reload balance uh, the waste at the schools, because uh, there's quite a few things that could be composted or recycled that are going straight into trash, and so I think we developed a pretty good plan around that. Um, the students there did a waste audit. Amy Roth also, on the same day, was doing a waste audit here at Maple Street. Um, and we went through some of the scenarios that we got from EMC, so I think it's a great and really fun committee, everyone should come. But we have, we'll probably have one more meeting um, before the end of the school year, and we met our new student rep. Laura already took care of that, which is great, so.
Lucy Beardmore.
Yep, Lucy Beardmore, which is great. Okay.
There is an upcoming CIP meeting on May twentieth, four forty-five.
Okay.
Um, we'll be reviewing the bids that came in for the Maple Street Boiler Project, and hopefully bringing them to approve, potentially bringing them for approval at that night.
Great.
The bids are due on Friday.
Great.
So somehow that's not on my calendar, so that's good that you mentioned it.
There you go.
May twentieth?
Yep, May twentieth, four forty-five.
Four forty-five.
Do you want me to send you the invite again, Jonathan?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Of course, I don't mind at all.
Cool. And then finance and budget, you guys will meet before the next meeting?
Yeah, we need to set something.
Okay, cool.
Okay, so there's nothing set right now. Perfect.
Great, okay. And with that, let me go back to the old agenda. So we are now to the second public comment portion of the evening. Just want to come up, name, address, statements. Okay, thanks, Laura. Um, any other business, old business, otherwise? Okay, we do not have a need for non-public at six fifty-three. I told you, Jonathan, I was predicting seven PM. Uh, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Remove.
Second.
All in favor? You guys?